...for the three interior towns and landscaper improvements that will occur along the north side of Hill, including the planting of street trees and additional landscaping, shrubs and palms in front of the building. As part of the final site plan review application, we have submitted the dibble engineering construction drawings. The town engineer as well as the utility engineer have reviewed these plans and have found them to be acceptable and compliant with code requirements. Those include paving and drainage plans for the new paving improvements, including the two new driveways, as well as the reconfiguration of the parking lot sign and the new loading area along the north side of Hill. These are the two new driveways coming up the hill that you tell those, and then general construction details for the other improvements. Additionally, there is a pollution prevention plan that is included in the plans again that have been reviewed by the town engineer. And there will be some minor adjustments and new connections for utilities, and the utility details have been reviewed by the town utility engineer. Additionally, landscape construction plans have been submitted and have been reviewed by the town, both the utility engineer to make sure that there are no conflicts between the planning and any of the existing utility lines, as well as by the town engineer, also I believe, as well as by the town manager. And that includes the planting of green buttonwood canopy trees that would go just north of the existing sidewalk on Hill that will provide shade for pedestrians as well as accentuate the front of the building. And those street trees will continue along the entire length of the frontage of Hill Avenue. New elevations also proposed based on the each property model and in front of the deconstructed parking area on the east side of Hill. And clear also construction details for the land area. There is an existing irrigation system on site. It will be modified to accommodate these proposed planned areas. On behalf of the applicant, I would like to ask for your approval of the final site plan application. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank town staff, Mr. Metz, Mr. Valberry, Nilsa, Deborah Ryan, and Gina, and Mr. Van Katt. We have worked very closely with town staff. As we all know, with the coronavirus, it posed some obstacles, but we were very, very happy to get through this process during the pandemic and before you receive the final site plan approval. The architects are preparing the building construction plan, and once we get through the final site plan approval, we will update the page. That the applicant will be submitting for building permits in the next few years. Thank you very much, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Just before we have administration, we'll go to Nilsa. Is there any additional information?
I have no comments. We have worked very close with the applicant through the process of the variance. The variance was a very involved process. We reviewed the project, then through the preliminary site plan, also the applicant provided all the information that were requested, so we have no further comment.
Thank you so much. Again, you have anything additional? Also with that, we'll now come to council. Are there any questions or comments that council has? Any questions or comments?
Yes, I agree. Once again, our committee's, our honor, is preparing the... Or do we call... A question that I have was regarding the traffic, the eighteen-wheelers, where will they be exiting the building and what will they be taking to get to Hill Avenue? And that there was a concern about how that was going to be constructed, that would be coming into the building.
Yes. The way that the site has been designed is that there is a one-way circulation upon the north side of the building. This driveway on the back of the building is narrow, but it can only accommodate the particular circulation in that direction. The each road at the point has been designed so that there are ample radiuses that trucks can come in with each other's claim. They will travel along the back of the building, they will back into the loading lot, and then they will leave the building in this direction. So there's a one-way circulation system for access to the rear of the building.
Okay, I think the pointer indicated that eighteen-wheelers will leave the left of the building going down 53rd Street and then Australian Avenue.
Correct. Depending on where they are going, where they leave, whether they go straight down Hill Avenue to 53rd Street, whether they turn and go to the east out this way, really will depend on where they're going. However, the roads, from what I understand, in speaking with town staff, have been designed to encourage and in looking at the connection along 53rd Street, that is a very convenient way to lead the building.
My only concern is the traffic light is Hill Avenue and for an eighteen-wheel exit at 53rd Street. I would definitely encourage the investigation of the traffic light at 53rd Street for the exit of number eighteen-wheel. What is your thought on that?
Based on traffic, this project is vested for traffic impact based on the existing building square footage. So it does not generate any new traffic as a result of these changes. In fact, it actually is a reduction in traffic because of the loss of square footage. So as far as traffic impact, there is no traffic impact as a result of the revelation of the change.
All right, so my main concern is the traffic is going to circle around the building and go out on Hill Avenue to the light. That's my main concern. So when you said there will not be any increased traffic, you have two entrances on the north end of the building that were not there before, that was reveling there would be more traffic. On the Hill Avenue side, it comes to the box truck that we usually describe to it. And I'm just concerned with the box truck traffic in that area that was not there before, and that's the eighteen-wheelers. I'm just concerned that there's some traffic on Hill Avenue, like it's starting on Hill Avenue. I'm just concerned about that. Do you say the traffic will not be increased for the death scene of the...
Okay, I understand where you're coming from. Actually, you asked us from Hill Avenue, if that will allow for traffic to access that way.
There's still some need to be a little more clarification.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Let me just pick it back off that. I think what the vice mayor was asking, because we've had the conversation, I think, previously, in terms of egress, you have persons now coming off of Australian, coming downhill. When they get to, of course, the turn-in into the facility, so they're coming from the east, they go into the back of the building, and allows the radius in order for them to sort of back those long trucks up into the bay. So now one would think that just the length of the trailers would prohibit them from being able to kind of make another turn, because sometimes you have ambitious drivers, like although not a whole lot of turning radius there, you may have some ambitious drivers who say, I'm just going to try it anyway, come right back out, go back down and head back on east on Hill. So what you have is a section of Hill Avenue where there are residents and little kids that play outside. So you would have the addition of potential of that happening. Now, in terms of what you've discussed, and we've sort of discussed as well, that no, they'd actually come in off a hill, go into the back, and then exit headed to the west, take a hill at the circle, go to 53rd. Make the left on 53rd, and then exit off of 53rd. So that would be the ideal thing, but I guess the question is, what do you have in place to safeguard that some ambitious driver does not do the opposite of what you're directing them to do?
The configuration of the drivers on the north side of the building really would prohibit, even if it's the most ambitious driver, from being able to make a turning move that will allow that he can come out of the site. There's only fifteen vehicles in this point of the building on the parking lot. Based on current studies or these documents, there is no way that anybody could, even by a multi-tool turn, make that from the back of the building. So I feel very confident that all of the trucks that come here having turned these trucks back in, they have no choice but to continue that because they just physically cannot, in their fifty-four, make that change.
So another question, and I've actually seen persons, and maybe, I don't know if they were fired, right, from their job, I've actually seen people in transfer trucks trying to negotiate sugar sand. So there are ambitious drivers that are trying anything for convenience. So now when they come out on the west side, now, of course, they can't go back because you state that turn radius just isn't there for a long trailer. But if they were to continue west, what is the exit, if you would, with your pointer, just hit the exit point to the west of the building? Right, so what would prohibit them from making a left turn to go back downhill? Right, so that, and I think that was the question, what do you have in place to ensure that they do not do that and that they continue on, on hill to the, around the curve? Hit 53rd, make the left, and then go down 53rd. What do you have in place to ensure that they do that?
At this time, there is nothing proposed that would prohibit them from making that left-hand turn and going back east on Hill Avenue. I can tell that the applicant has not the opportunities to find a senior that would direct trucks directly straight onto Hill Avenue to 53rd. When they are marketing and leasing the site, they can definitely encourage their tenants to utilize that as their primary access to the building.
Okay. And of course, and then just as information, one of the concerns as well was that it took a, it took about seventeen years to actually get to the point of putting the utilities that we have underground and then repairing the road to ensure that we have to drain it, because the applicant before, one of the things that happens, of course, is Mango and Park is sort of built on an incline, so the water, the outfall goes into the, I see four canal, and so, right, however, the road, I'm sure the road would carry the traffic for a period of time, but then we're right back to repairing, and so that was one of the reasons why we've tried to make sure that the heavy trucks, the industrial trucks, do not traverse Hill Avenue because of that primarily. Right, so we would like to see something in place, I don't know if there is some type of, I'm using the word loosely, barrier that would prohibit that left-hand turn to head back east on Hill Avenue, but we'd like to see something other than just a signage, because people see the sign, I'm in a rush, I need to get to the light, going to head on downhill, hill again, heading east. So we'd really like to see something to prohibit that. I'm not sure what kind of physical barriers, but just something as opposed to just a signage. Okay? Okay?
If you can give me your name, your name, and see if you have any suggestions as our president is there.
Okay. All righty, appreciated. Now, if you can go to page six.
Of your slide?
Of your slide?
Just a question.
Just a question for clarity.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
You see the parking area across the street?
Just to the south.
Just to the south?
That would be the bottom.
That would be the bottom left?
Portion of it?
Yeah.
There.
There. Come over all the way to the left?
Right across.
Right across.
Okay, right there.
Okay, right there, yes. Right, now, was this for illustration purposes only? Purposes only? Are you also proposing to have long-term, short-term parking there for trucks as well?
That was a special use permit that was previously approved by the town council for home maintenance.
Okay, so this is... Okay, so this is...
Okay, so that reflects...
Okay, so that reflects what's currently happening, not what you would have, okay.
...impaction parking, how we can incorporate that.
Okay, thanks. That clarified those two things for me. So if there's any other comments, questions from council, any other council comments or questions?
Okay, with permission?
Okay, with permission, we'll go to the floor to see if there's any comments or questions from the floor.
Keep in mind, this is a...
Keep in mind, this is a traffic issue as well, so if there's any comments or questions.
Well, is that traffic being commented with the people that's there over there? I mean, she is in everything, it's a tight, it's a tight squeeze already, she's always coming in different directions of each other, it's still a tight squeeze, it's getting new.
Certainly. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry if you just come forward to...
Okay, I'm sorry if you just come forward and just state your name and address so that we'll know whom we're speaking.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Okay, well, just from there.
Okay, well, just from there, what's your name?
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, okay, thanks, Mr. Douglas. The answer to your question is yes, and that's been one of the concerns expressed throughout the whole process, the additional trucks or coming. So what would happen in this proposal here, and I'll yield to the applicant in case I misstate anything? Trucks could come off of Australian Avenue, heading east on Hill, but once they get to the site, then they would actually turn in, to the site, go to the back, do their loading, unloading, and then exit to the west, go down 53rd. So there would be that stretch where there would be one-way traffic with trucks. Right, that is what's being proposed here today.
Right, and then the extended...
Right, and then the extended conversation is, how do you prohibit those very same trucks from then turning and going right back downhill to add one more layer of traffic? And so they're going to give the engineers to address that, but yes, to your question, they'd be coming downhill for that stretch of drive.
Okay, ready, any other questions?
Ready, any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Ready, any other comments from the floor? Questions or comments from the floor?
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, and then we'll close the floor to comments, and we'll come back to the dais if there's any additional questions or comments.
Essentially, two entrances that will be on Hill Avenue. You had mentioned the previous presentation that was before entrance in a box truck. So right there from the end, going directly into the... And how many bays for parking included in anticipating use of those two entrances?
Each day we have one entry.
Oh, just one parking for a truck and a box truck?
One exit point into the bay for the box truck.
And then they do their load or unload or whatever, and come right back out?
Yes. The ten stations that are in the middle of the building, they are the ones that are most constrained with living and access, and one of them is provided and serves one of those buildings, second entrance line which serves the other of the building.
Okay, I guess it would take some systematic planning of whatever businesses that would occupy those bays. There certainly is only one truck coming in. And reviems are fine.
They would have to have operational standards.
And then that may increase the possible use of the parking on the south side of the street, or those trucks that would be coming right out onto the...
The anticipation is that the parking on the other side of the street will serve the employees that will be working in those bays. Because right now, the tenants on the east side of the site utilize the parking here on the east side, and the tenants on the west utilize the parking on the west, but the tenant bays that are in the middle of the building right now are being controlled. So once they do get occupied and added to the waiting, they would then be parking in the parking lot on the south side of Hill.
Well, it's a little clearer, you're indicating two possible delivery trucks that are fine. It's larger. It's greater than thinking that there were about five or six for each day.
Well, the driveway is sixteen-dee wide, will only accommodate one truck at a time. Now, tenants may have somebody who's working on vehicles, one of the prospective tenants was a company that puts stickers on company vehicles where you'll see bumper stickers or bungalows on the different businesses. They will do that internal in the building, and they utilize that driveway to access all the vehicles. And then you'll be working, putting stickers on, finding stickers inside in the building where they have the weather protection.
Well, that would be reasonable. I'm just very concerned, because that would be adding traffic to Hill Avenue. I didn't know, so, and then leaving, or that's fine, and I am concerned that, as you mentioned, there are residents, families right there, that these trucks will be passing, I don't know what to do, and, you know, we don't even know what time these trucks will be coming and are going, but we have to be concerned about whether it's going to be adequate for the residential area right there in connection to this building. I have to concern myself.
Ready, and just briefly, as the vice mayor stated, in terms of what I call standing, where you have trucks who sort of, well, I ran late, so I got here at a certain time, and another truck, and so you have this line of trucks, and that's the residence gentleman stated, that could, that's a potential hazard, if indeed that happens, so from a management standpoint, it's crucial that they understand. So to that, is there a cutoff time for deliveries and pickups? Before you answer, the reason why I say that, I noticed that the bays that are currently there on the east side of the building, at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, those refrigerated trucks come and they stand, it shakes the house, and it's just the vibration, and you're awakened, and it's like, oh, my goodness. So is there a cutoff time that you're advocating? I'm not sure who can answer that question.
There has not been any discussion. I was operating besides what would be in the downtown.
Right, okay, right. Okay, and the code does have a noise ordinance, perhaps we would, on our side, needs to address in terms of decibel levels.
And I think we do.
And I think we do, and it's kind of hard to register that kind of noise, because it's vibration, which is even worse than a loud sound, something just vibrating at two o'clock in the morning, you're awakened about the vibration, so it would be crucial that we address that as well. So we can do that from our side, okay, but I just wanted to know if you had planned cutoff time after eleven o'clock at night, nine o'clock, no more deliveries, we'll see you tomorrow.
...in the past, I think, we passed a thirty-four hundred employees in the building. This is no longer, this is now a downtown building, operations, coming in the morning before I, this is no longer, I don't know what trucks you've been doing, this is no longer at all.
Okay, great, because I know there were no sound spikes probably in the ground, because it just came straight across the street and just vibrated everybody. Okay, thanks, we appreciate it. Okay, so noted.
Any other questions?
Ready, any other questions or comments council has? Okay. Ready, seeing that we had full discussion, this is, we've discussed this probably at nauseance, I would imagine.
No other questions or comments?
No other questions or comments?
Thank you so much for your comments.
And thank you so much for your comments from the floor. So at this point in time, we'll close conversation and we'll go to a vote. As a release to the proposed ordinance, resolution, my apologies, number two oh two oh, I'm sorry, resolution two oh two oh dash one one, approval of final site plan application, SR two oh two oh dash two oh three, Alliance, just P West Palm Beach Real House, what is your pleasure? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
And just before you do...
And just before you do, as you, before you do, just as a state for the record as well, just for the record, and you have received, applicant and the representative, a copy of the engineer's comments, and you agree with all of those?
Yes. You see the comments that the lawyer is like, and all those have been addressed.
Can you understand that what he's recommending is approval of the technical aspects of the plan at this point?
So noted.
So noted. With that, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve. Resolution number twenty, twenty eleven. And the plan SR application number twenty twenty oh three.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilwoman Green. Ready, uh, problem with the second, any questions on the motion? Any further questions or discussion on the motion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm from the first class. I'm from the first class. I'm from the first class. Um, what is there?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure it was recorded.
Okay, and yes as well. Okay, and of course, this approving the technical aspects, and then there's some additional things along, and we are, planning engineer will address those items. Thank you so...
Yes.
Yes, so it was unanimous.
We thank you so much.
Okay, we thank you so much, and we appreciate your diligence and allowing us to beat up on you through the process, we appreciate that as well. Okay? So certainly, you have a great evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, just before we proceed, is the individual here?
Okay.
Okay, ready, just to council, I, in my meeting with the town manager on yesterday, I had asked if the...
Angela.
Angela C. Atkinson, we were looking to secure as a consultant, who's the bookkeeping that could come, and our apologies, had I known you were here, we would have added you earlier. So we just wanted to meet her and give her opportunity to introduce herself prior to your pool. So at this time, we'll just have her come forward and just kind of share with us information about you. Thank you, good evening.
I'm a resident, private, county manager, and just recently have been doing consulting. I have looked for a couple towns, of all these towns, and I remember, as far down as I can, I've been...
Otskaruke, just yeah.
You have a question that I need to work directly with other, have been running, finding persons, working, you know, serial person, finding serial person, maybe, doing cover, running the same. Do you have anything to put on your, to discover, overall, probably twenty-four years, to do now?
Okay, what's holy, and we certainly appreciate you coming. So we'll see if there's any specific questions. Now, Ken and I had a chance to really go over some things, I'm going to defer to others who may have some questions. Any questions or comments for Ms. Atkinson?
Well, I would like to, thank you for taking this opportunity, and let us consider you. I, um, I am very hopeful that you come with a good list of government...
Sure.
Sure. Let's break them to know, so that you go to be aware of... Let's break them to know, so that you go to be aware of our biggest concern is our summer budgetary.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so just while they're gathering their thoughts, okay? Um, and, and I've gone through the resume, and so I have, so this is more or less for the record and for those in attendance. Now, are you CPA as well, or? The third hours? Okay. Well, certainly understood, or definitely understood. Now, in terms of just reconciliations, you do all of that as well, or?
The towns and cities that worked before are probably two or three years behind. So those are the audits that I've been working on, we've, I mean, some are part of my annual emergency cities that I've worked in. So, yes. Not judging correctly, but you have to be able, you have to be able, anything in the balance sheet typically has to be reconciled for your audit.
Okay, so all of them, okay, so all of the ledgers, everything, and, okay. Now, and I know that a lot of things that we're doing currently in this environment particularly is remote. Um, now, as it relates to onsite, some things just simply can't be done remotely. Uh, you agreeable to some hours onsite? Okay, so we would actually schedule at a minimum once a month, and then as needed, if the need arises? Okay. All righty, okay, those are the questions I have at this time, are there any additional, uh, Councilwoman Connaughton?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Your hourly rate is?
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions or comments from Council? And keeping in mind that this is a consultant contract, so we would be doing the hiring, so, have any questions? Any questions or comments?
We was moving to that anyway. If my memory serves me right.
All right, this is your opportunity. Ken, you have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, just to add, uh, it's forty-three dollars hourly for ten hours per week. And, uh, we are behind our audit, and I wish you can help us get caught up. This is an interim position that you would be considering tonight for a ninety-day period with the option to make it permanent. She likes us, we like her, that kind of thing, so you would be approving a ninety-day agreement tonight.
And you have had some, and office time to sort of assess things and? Okay, all righty. Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Green?
Just curious, when you say interim, you mean she may, she doesn't like us after a week, how long are you talking about? Oh, okay, thank you.
I want to ask, if a tenant, if a car, if a car were in the middle of more than ten hours a week, um, concerned, what would happen?
Ready, other questions or concerns?
I think out of the line, they would decide. I don't think we know what's going to happen with an I D, what services exactly that you need. I mean, we've listed, we've gone over a bunch of things that are needed until I get a grasp of everything that's needed and how I'm going to take action. We have a much standard rate and pretty much, pretty much it's held with the other partners, but I found like, it's actually. I end up having, I think ten hours, um, raised on the bank records, I think we've discussed this, like, it'll be, I think I did some on the.
Okay.
But I need to sit with the bank managers.
Okay. All righty, anything else, Vice Mayor? Okay, Councilwoman Green?
If I'm reading this correctly, you come to us from Boynton?
Apparently, that was my prior salary, but right now, I am working for a town, um, in West Palm Beach, consulting, and a town, a city in my. But yes, I was a deputy director of.
So you, so you, your last job was where? You said you come to us from where? From here, you said you, two thousand nineteen was Boynton?
At the top of my resume, I say, um, S S L, which is a.
I know, where were you? I know, where were you last employed, is what I was asking.
I'm currently employed, but last employed, City of.
Where? Where? What did I say, you come to us from Boynton?
No, it's a prior position, but I'm currently employed.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. You're currently employed where? You're currently employed where?
At a town, at a different town, and I don't.
Oh, never mind, okay. Oh, never mind, okay, I understand, okay, thank you. I'll ask you after the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, since I didn't understand what the clerk said. In case you leave before we do, could you answer my question, I can go out with you before you leave, in case you don't want to stay, okay?
Okay, all right, now, what we want to do, because I understand you live in Coors Springs. So we want to get you home, so, all righty, so if there's no other questions or comments, we'll do that, and then we could, okay? All righty? Here, there's no other questions or comments? That we have before us, of course, a request, and this comes about way of the administration, this is a request. Can come from administration? Uh, that we extend a interim, uh, consulting contract, uh, agreement, uh, to Miss Angela C. Atkins for the purpose of bookkeeping here in the town of Meganonia Park at a rate of forty-three dollars an hour, up to ten hours, and, uh, as needed. Those are very essential moments, uh, for a ninety-day period. Uh, so that is the, uh, motion before. Request before us, what is your pleasure?
Question.
Councilwoman Green?
Just being safe. Just being safe. For example, I say yes, and after ninety days, she decides she wants to stay. And I, I mean, I say no, and after ninety days, she wants to stay. No, say, say for example, someone up here. Let me ask it another way. Let me ask it another way. Never mind, never mind.
That's okay, you have a question?
I want to start off on a good foot, that's okay, I was trying to be fair, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, you read my mind, okay, okay.
All righty. Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions? We'll entertain a motion, a motion, please. Motion has been made, so second?
Second, second.
Has been properly moved and seconded that we, uh, uh, end into a, an agreement with Miss Angela C. Atkinson for the purpose of bookkeeping here in the town of Meganonia Park for a period of ninety days, uh, on an interim basis initially. And, uh, so we have the question, or any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. Thank you so much, welcome. Thank you so much, welcome, and then, of course, Keith, they will have the LOA. Lot of agreement? Okay, so all ready, ready to go, oh, great, great.
No, it's not ready, I, I'll put it together based on council's direction.
Okay, all righty, we'll just have the scope of services, uh, kind of in there as well, then. Okay, thanks so much, and we appreciate you wanting to come and assist us, thank you so much. So with that, and, um, and feel free, we know that I, it's a long drive, I was just there the other day, so. I think so much, we appreciate you coming, okay? Okay, we're going to continue on our agenda, our next item. Okay, it's just a miscellaneous business, we have an item, um. D, I'm sorry, six D, and this is a consideration for the ward of renewal contract to F M I T. This is a court of Florida Municipal and Trust Insurance Trust for fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, are there any questions or comments as it relates to the proposal? Me and this is, Ken? Thanks so much. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none, motion, please? This is item six D, seven D. And you have the, uh, schematic in front of you, just as it relates to the. Right, so if there's no questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion. Thank you so much, motion has been made, is there a second to that motion? Has been properly moved that we award a renewal contract to F M I T, Board of Municipal Insurance Trust for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which reflects a five point six percent increase, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. All righty, so, um, Ken, do we have, um, because we don't want to have them sitting here, um, do we have, uh, the applicants or the requests for item seven H and I? Are they present? Are they present? They are here? They are here? Okay, all righty, uh, what council's pleasure, um, we, I know that we didn't reorder the agenda at the beginning, but if council wants to take this out of order so that we don't have them here all night? All righty? Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, so with that, we'll just have you state your name and address for the record, of course, what we're looking at now is, uh, item seven H. Seven H? Seven H. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, you have the information before you, uh, as we pull our information, your specific, um, request would be, and I'll yield the floor to you. So H and I, so H and I, okay? Uh, seven H? Uh, seven H? So we're going to seven eight and I? Okay, so that's your ask? Seven H? All right, um, just a quick question, when did you purchase the property? And you did a, you did a lien search through the county? Did you do a lien search through the county? Right, now, the official record would be with the county, uh, when did you do the county search? The lien search through the county? You did that in February as well, through the county? Okay, because the official, okay, like, the official lien search is filed with the county, and so they would have the accurate information, particular with their accrual of the fees and everything, so when did you actually go to the county to secure information regarding liens? Okay, so it wasn't done at the county?
No, I think they just request information directly from the city.
Okay, Ken? Okay, Ken?
Just prepared, I made on that, now, our lien search is pretty limited to outstanding, outstanding utility bills, that kind of thing. Now, that kind of thing, now, it is some more recent code enforcement action, you know, that may be regularly applicable. I believe, though, that we're talking about H, which is Westport, I don't believe that's been purchased yet, I believe.
No, 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 this is addressing forty-eight eleven Australian Avenue.
So, on, uh, H, H Westport has not been purchased yet.
Okay, all righty, so that was what we were, okay, so then, for the record, we're now going to go to I. You've purchased, you purchased that property? Okay, okay, okay? Which is H? Which is H? Right, so let's stay with the one that you own, uh, so it would be the same questions, so your question regarding the purchase date was, uh, February twenty of this year? For I?
I'm not sure of the actual purchase date, um, I think, yeah, we purchased it after we received the lien.
So that we're, so we're not confused on the record, I'll come to you, so we're not confused on the record? The lien search you're referring to is, is what?
A lien search, probably prior to Prop. 11.
Okay, and? Okay, and? Okay, so then, you stated, uh, I just want to make sure that your response also pertains to seven I. But as it relates to going through the official lien search at the county, when was that conducted? For I? Okay, again, I'm sort of reiterating that the official request is through the county, uh, that wasn't done, you stated. Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, Vice Mayor, then Councilwoman Green?
Now, you and these two persons, separate, separate, sorry, giving the view.
We're on I.
Well, I don't wanna get I, I wanna get address, because you're still getting...
V.
Which is I, which is, which is H. Forty-eight eleven Australian Avenue is the first purchased property. It's February. And you did not have those lien searches done prior to purchasing. Such a pity, found out that there is a deed down of this property, is that correct?
I'm sorry, before you begin...
I'm sorry, before you begin...
You just stated forty-eight eleven.
You just stated forty-eight eleven has not been purchased yet.
That was my question earlier.
That was my question earlier before I went down. Okay.
It's okay, I...
Okay, it's okay, I... Yeah, I got confused, okay.
I thought you go by the address. So we can...
Forty-eight eleven is item...
Forty-eight eleven was purchased in February. Without, without a property deed search, deed search that had been prior to the amount, amount.
We did conduct a lien search for forty-eight eleven prior to purchasing. That's the one that's in the attachment, and it says that there's nothing on Mangonia Park, that's zero dollars. So then we went ahead and purchased it, and then we came back for another, um, town council a few months ago, I think, and four over, and had discussed plans for this lot. And then it was stated that there probably were means, um, to be for this property. So now we just got the payoff amount and that's the seventy-two thousand dollar amount for this property.
Wow, that's a big move. That's what I was trying to say. Okay, so the lien search was conducted by whom for forty-eight eleven?
Prop logic.
Prop logic. Prop logic is the one that told you there was no, no lien down.
Yes, based off of that letter from Mangonia, saying that the records in the town of Mangonia don't reflect any reported on case or...
Oh, this is like, I started like, oh my God, not by the county record. That's what I wanted. That's what I wanted to do.
Well, someone is probably doing lien searches. Uh, sometimes I think that there was a code point violation on property. Normally, we check for all of the open building permits, um, code violations, water, uh, roads, different outstanding water bills, kind of payments that haven't been made, green deeds, et cetera. Title companies do title searches. That's where the county comes in. Every time you buy a piece of property, no matter if it's residential or commercial, or in the state, this is correct, or whatever it's worth, you should have a lien search done and a title search done. The title search, when you don't automatically, but this one reported in the public record, regardless of what any city tells, it would come up under title. What you tell is that probably was the lien part, title company that they use for the lien search, something that would know that their title is hard. They only get a local municipal lien search, they do not do a title search. That would have showed up very much, not in very far due at the time that we asked for it.
Okay. All righty?
Councilwoman Green?
All righty, Councilwoman Green?
Mr. Mayor, is this the one I was asking about, that's at the end of Australian? I just wanna know what this property is located. Okay. Okay, I have a question. I know Mr. Mayor would know. This is not made by Lucio Bar.
Yes.
I told you. I told you.
It's made by Lucio Bar.
It's made by Lucio Bar.
Am I the only one who knows the history behind it?
No.
No, I remember it. Or is it the house?
The one that was set it back.
You couldn't miss it.
You gotta keep it, it's historical.
Is forty-eight eleven... Is forty-eight eleven, is that the property next to the railroad track? No. No.
It's a one up on the hill.
It's a one up on the hill.
Okay.
Also, it's not made by Lucio Bar.
No, the...
On the one?
H. H.
Oh, H is?
Yeah, twelve, twelve O two.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
Other questions?
Other questions?
Sorry, other questions or comments?
No.
The most racist piece of property in politics.
I'd love to hear about it.
Okay, if we can, if we can come together? Okay, just as it relates to the, uh, your ask, normally what we have done just procedurally is that we incur cost. Right, um, where there has been code enforcement over a period of time, whatever the case is, so we look at what I consider our hard cost. Right, and, uh, and for, so, I guess, um...
So we have never...
So we have never waived our cost?
Because in essence...
Right, because in essence, that would be us using public dollars to give to the person with the request, which we can't do.
So it can't be zero.
So it can't be zero, I guess, is what I'm saying, as gently as I can. Okay?
I understand we don't have time on that. We're under the pressure of zero.
Right.
Right. No, title search is always recommended by any company, you know, before you purchase. Right, and that's why I kept asking. Did you go to the county?
Which is the official?
Uh, which is the official record? You know, right. So what...
Mr. Mayor? I just, I'm just curious. If you don't know, I'm just asking out of curiosity, what do you wanna do? What are your future plans with this, with, uh, one twelve O two?
So our plan is to own both of those lots and create a small warehouse and office space for our business.
Really? Really?
Yeah. We're a four-year-old builder, building in Riviera Beach, West, um, we're still expanding, but we don't have concrete office space or warehouse for our materials, so that's what our goal was, with these two properties.
Mr. Mayor? Let me ask you that.
You have another question?
You have another question?
I just can't see how you're gonna make a warehouse with, with Mabel Lu... I'm just thinking about the thing. When you come down Australia and you pass that ugly clothing store cleaner, cleaner, and Mabel Lu Spa is right in front of us, right at the end of the, of Australia, right? When you go into the...
That's where the bar used to be.
Your left side.
You're coming north?
You're coming north? You're heading south on your right hand side? Coming north on your left hand side, right by the fence?
I like that, okay, I told the town manager, I'm a hands-on person. I have to go look at it, because when I envision, if I'm envisioning Mary Lou Spa, I can't see a way back there in a warehouse, but that's okay, I wanna go look at it.
Yeah, and I mean, even if it's not a warehouse, right, that would be a discussion and approval for a future meeting, assuming, um, but right now, the purchase is what we're interested in, because for the Westport lot, um, I spoke to the county, and they're giving us till the end of this month, so October thirty, on Friday, to purchase it, um, because it would have been on the land available list for more than three years after that point, so we wouldn't be able to...
Okay. Righty, so... Right. All righty, so let's do this, so we can expedite it, right, because any...
Construction that will happen.
Construction that will happen would be a conversation later. Right, and so just as it relates to your specific request, uh, what we have done, and we sort of set a precedent for it, good or bad, is that we've always looked at fees, and number one, we will make sure we cover our costs, whatever those are, and Tom Edgins and I got together to try and assess exactly what that was. Um, but...
More broadly?
More broadly, uh, when we have these, whether it's five dollars or five hundred thousand dollars, sort of the precedent that we as a council has set, again, good or bad, has been that we would look at no less than thirty-five percent. Right, thirty-five percent.
Whatever it is.
Right, whatever it is, fifteen dollars or fifteen hundred million dollars, uh, right, as sort of a...
So that we...
A threshold, so that we're equitable, and we're fair with everyone that we deal with as opposed to saying, okay, for this one, five percent or ten percent, that had just sort of been the standard that we've done.
So with that...
Uh, so with that, um, thirty-five percent, Ken, would have been... Okay. Uh, for both.
Mayor may...
Mayor may, while you're...
While you're doing...
While you're doing, while a math is being done, uh...
One of the things that's important is, is this property in compliance. If the property's not in compliance, and you're reducing, and, and, and the lien, you lose all your leverage to get the property back into compliance. There's been no discussion about the condition of the property, whether it's in compliance. Um, so, I think that that's something the council needs to consider, in my opinion.
Correct, you're correct, and what I didn't state is normally, um, what we do is then we refer it on to, um, the magistrate as a recommendation. Right, is normally what we would do. She has a time issue, which I guess we were trying to attend, so I didn't sort of state that that's the normal process, that here's our recommendation to the next process. Um, so with that, then I'll now go to the attorney, because you're now stating that, well, we gotta do this before the end of the month, which would sort of bypass the process that we normally do from this body, not, we make it, not a decision, but a recommendation to be considered at the, um, at that level, as it relates to the magistrate. Uh, so as it relates to a compliance issue, I'll turn over to Keith to find out exactly what is the immediate plan in terms of compliance.
Well, since we purchased it, we put it on the plan on what we wanted to do is being that Westport lot, so that we can also take care of that, because right now it's just abandoned property, um, you know, right now, so we are trying to move on this as fast as possible, but we tried best to stay on top of our lot so that everything's...
Keith, from a legal standpoint, uh, can it help us out, help to direct us here?
Well, I mean, again, if, well, I mean, again, if the lien is reduced...
The lien is reduced...
It's very unusual for...
It's very unusual for a lien to be reduced if the property is still in violation, because that is your leverage to get it in compliance. If you reduce the lien, and the reduced amount is paid, and the lien is released, you have zero leverage to get the property back into compliance. The person could do whatever they wanna do, leave it, and walk away, and you have, you've given up all of your ability to, um...
Your foreclosure authority.
Your foreclosure authority, and any, 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 uh...
Leverage to get it into compliance.
You will be giving away, so, so, in my opinion. You know, I can't tell you you can't do it, I'm telling you that, um, that is a potential consequence that you need to consider. Well, certainly. No, and specifically, just in terms of our, uh, being our attorney, just the legal directives or suggestions, recommendations that you would give us, just before that, you have a question to this, and then we'll go back to Keith?
Have we gone along this angle?
Uh, no, we haven't.
Explain that to me one more time.
So, so, code enforcement assesses liens when a property is in violation, and the liens continue to accrue until the person brings the property into compliance. So there's a lien out there on this piece of property, I assume, and... Until... Typically, typically, the person is not eligible to ask for a reduction until all the violations have been cured, and, and, and the property is in compliance.
They have done that.
I don't, I, I don't know.
What mail you asked?
Of course.
Have you done that? I thought that's what it did.
The clarification that I'm putting on this was, when the property was in violation, the town brought it into compliance by way of demolition, and that's also included on your administrative costs. And since that time, it's not been under any code enforcement actions, so if we sit here today, it's in compliance, and that would go for the vote process. So the town brought it into compliance by way of demolition.
So you're saying it, so you're saying it is in compliance?
I didn't, I have no knowledge, I just wanted to make sure that the council asked that question, and that that information, I didn't, I didn't know.
Well, certainly, and that's understood, in fact, I was going to ask, what were the issues by which the citations and subsequently liens took place?
First property?
Uh, the first property, so that was, um, I think, probably abandoned, unsafe house that the town demolished? Demolished?
What was our...
And what was our, what was our, roughly?
Is there no demolition cost?
Is there no demolition cost a little bit?
Demolition cost for, now, we're talking about forty-eight eleven.
If you don't have the hard, if you don't have the hard number, just...
That's, uh, forty-eight eleven was seventy-five hundred dollars, that was the demolition, which was a, uh... Demolition. A demolition ad placed, and there were other administrative costs, you know, so...
The fines were charged prior to demolition, and you had to be held for property, the property was, um, they say the broker boroughs never did anything about it, so the lien ran up until the demolition occurred, under previous some, I think, I'm confused, because you didn't...
Yes.
Demolished property, I think there was asbestos too related to the shed or something, maybe, kind of, I'm not sure if I'm doing that stuff. But the bigger part of the fines, what we, what probably towards demolition, was the lien belongs to the property to a payment company or demolition company, the property changed, and the fine remained, and then out some kind of stuff, starting with, uh, cutting edge or, I don't know, it was still in the state of Roger Burrows, when we purchased it, is that correct?
Yes, that is...
And that's to the violation in London, you say with Roger Burrows, he's widow, just didn't anything about the property, we didn't state it. We wind it up having to demolish it, because it was unstate.
Okay. All righty? All righty? Okay.
And council member going to answer your question. Are we talking about two houses that are on Australian Avenue and Westport, where you get the Shiller Memorial? There are two houses on Australian that lead up to, um, Shiller Memorial, Westport, the little side street, and there are like a couple of houses that face Australian, that face Westport, but they're on the corner of Westport and Australian Avenue, it's a little tiny road, and it used to be made for residential, including the estate that was demolished. That's where, that's where the location is. You have Mabel Lu Spa, that's turned down by the railway track.
Right.
Then you have the property that's Mr. Chuck Main, that sits on an hill.
Right.
And then next to that would be...
Oh, that's what they have. Okay, all right. Okay. But it is in compliance. But it is in compliance. You said I think. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
You're saying that the town, town court, 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 uh, you're decreasing down to thirty-five percent, or do you... Property zone?
Yes, ma'am, if you reduce it, using the formula that you're speaking of right now, reduce it down to thirty-five percent, uh, that total would be twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six, and one's free to, double checking all that, but that's, and that's, again, forty-eight eleven Australian, the total fines that we sit here and laying at, seventy-two thousand seven hundred ninety-one and thirty-six.
Okay.
Subtracted to sixty-five percent, you would come down to twenty-five thousand four seventy-six.
Okay, other questions or comments?
So, uh... If, it's my understanding, they haven't bought twelve O two.
They have not, uh, they're facing a town deadline of November first.
So, what would the, what would the, uh, amount be on that one if they bought it?
Well, talking about the lien reduction, if it's a lien reduction, uh, that would Well, talking about the lien reduction, if it's a lien reduction, uh, that would be down to about thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six. Using the formula that we're speaking of.
Already. I think just while, pins is all on pads. Um, and again, and I fully understand the consternation. Certainly understand what the attorney is stating in terms of, and what we always do as well in terms of just sort of forwarding out all. Um, that if indeed this amount is agreed to by both the body here as well as the requister. Uh, Keith, because there is a lien on it, it has gone beyond, has gone through the actual code process. If there was a magistrate involved, it has gone beyond that, is now the court. Fines are being assessed.
There would have been a code enforcement hearing that resulted in orders assessing fines and finding violations, which the town would have recorded in the public records, creating these liens. So, uh, yes, they would have both gone through the process. Uh, would have been years ago, but that's, you know, these liens by statute have a twenty-year lifespan. Um, so I know that they occurred within that period of time. Um, the other thing that I would recommend to the council, if there is going to be a, a motion to approve any reduction, that you set a, uh, specific deadline on the payment of the reduced amount. And if it's not paid within that time, that it reverts back to the original, um, full lien amount. And that's very typical, um, practice in a, in a reduction setting.
Okay, well, certainly, I didn't want, I'll come right to you. Certainly wanted to make sure that we weren't countermanding anything that was still sort of an active code enforcement case. And that's why I had asked, and I was well beyond that at this point, so.
I'm sorry I didn't.
I'm sorry I didn't. Okay, I was just making sure that we didn't countermand any current or active code enforcement. That's something we certainly don't.
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, so it's well beyond that. Okay, Councilman Green?
Some question, some question. In, in other words, because whoever did, made a mistake, made a mistake. Therefore, the town has to lose the money, that's why it's just, we have to lose the money because whoever did, whoever did this made a mistake.
No, ma'am, you absolutely do not. It's, it's your decision. It's, it's completely at the council's discretion. You do not have to grant, there's no legal requirement to grant any reduction.
I'm not saying it that way. I'm saying if we prove it, you know, it wasn't our fault that, that, that you hide, you hide someone who made a mistake. In that, in that debate, you're...
It's completely in your discretion to consider that or not consider that, um, a reason to grant a reduction. Completely up to you guys.
Here, here's, here's my, in thirty seconds, here's my quick thought. And the reason why I would be sort of agreeable to, um, a reduction. Uh, if it's going to go to a, a tax sale, they always, if it's going to go, expression, doorsteps of the court, kind of a thing, somebody would come along and buy it. Um, then what would happen at that point in time is that we would, I don't know where we'd be in hierarchy. If they were to sell the property for fifty thousand dollars, right? I don't know where we are in the hierarchy of payment. Normally governmental entities, you would think we'd be right at the top. Sometimes we're not. Um, so there, we could run the risk of getting, uh, everything at the sale if they sold it for a hundred thousand dollars. Right, we could actually realize more than, whatever we're negotiating, or more than what's owed. Then there's also the possibility that we can get five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars. There is an unknown. Um, so my thought is that, um, we want to see something happen there, and that's not the discussion here. We, we encourage development, so we want to see something happen to improve the property. What is the best way to get that done and the most expedient way to get that done? Unfortunately, fortunately, depending on perspective, that would be to settle this, kind of move them along. Kind of get some plans in here real quick. Let's kind of get something going. You have a vision, let's get it done, kind of the thing, so we can improve the property and then start realizing residual income. Um, that's one school of thought. The other school of thought is, yeah, we could lose. If we went to a tax sale and they sold it for two hundred thousand, and our share would be a hundred thousand, yeah, we would lose. That's unknown, we don't know.
I guess the other question I have on, on the, not forty-eight eleven, but on, uh, twelve oh two. If, if the requister is not legally attached to the property, I'm not sure that, that... Without the property owner's consent, that they have the ability to come here and ask you to reduce somebody else's lien. That's essentially what's happening. And they don't own it, they're not even a contract purchaser, without the property owner somehow stepping in and saying that, you know... I could come in and ask you to go reduce someone else's lien, under that theory. I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm very sure that that's probably not appropriate. And I understand there are deadlines looming and things like that, um, but, but...
Is the, is the, is the property owner, uh, is that person still alive and can be contacted?
At the attorney's point, that would be a conditional thing based on their purchase, the lien reduction condition based on the purchase. The difference at this point, uh, is condition on the purchase.
That's the way, that's the way.
I'll go right ahead. I'll go right ahead.
That's the way I was thinking, I, I thought I was thinking incorrectly, because if, if I owe a lien on a piece of property and, and, and counsel wants to purchase it, he's helping me out. That means I don't have to pay the lien with the property being sold. Am I thinking correctly?
No, you're not thinking incorrectly, just...
Okay, so you didn't, okay, so you didn't say anything else?
It's, it's not usual for a, a, someone that's not legally attached to the property to be making a request like this. So it would have to be, it would have to be conditioned. And I, and I, again, would urge a very, um, strict timeframe to make that payment and show ownership of the property on that one.
Well, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I was always told that when you buy a piece of property, the first thing you do is buy title insurance.
That's not a bad idea.
And, and they guarantee the property to be free and clear.
Typically, typically.
Am I right or wrong?
That's the way, that's a good practice, and when you travel down that path, that's the way it's supposed to work. Title companies make, um, insurance companies make mistakes from time to time as well. But, yes, in a perfect world, that is how it works.
Already.
That's the reason I brought up, uh, twelve oh two, was just to give the lady an idea of what they're gonna have to pay. If they did purchase that property. That's why I brought that up.
Okay, right, so let's do this. Right, so let's do this. Um, then we can have discussion just based upon what I, what maybe your, your desire here. So that I'm clear for the record, uh, West Court, the twelve oh two West Court has not been purchased yet? Okay, I just want to make sure I got it right this time. Right, so that is the request, uh, that's, uh, goes, uh, along the lines of what the attorney was saying appropriately. Right, so, um, if indeed it's your desire, then someone can make a motion, if it's your desire to do so, uh, someone can make a motion that we, that we reduce the lien amount on the property from thirty-eight seven eight nine point zero six to thirteen five seven six, providing that the current owner of the property make the request and payment of thirteen five seven six be paid within thirty days, from today. Failure to do so would result in the liens being restored to the full amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents.
One other question.
Okay, mm-hmm.
In other words, in other words, this motion holds up the sale of that property. If they're sending, we, it's yes, if the lien is set, that's all you're saying, right?
No, because what we give to her is that council, council would have made a decision that here's where we are. They would have to make a business decision that council stated that should we, if we can get the owner of that property in here to make that request, we won't be paying thirty-eight thousand, we'll only be paying thirteen thousand. That's the assurance we could give her, that's the only assurance we can give her tonight, if that's your desire. Right, there would be, there would be a decision on the record that it would be thirteen, that had been reduced by sixty-five percent. So, but they would have to make that decision, mm-hmm.
In order for us to get any kind of guarantee that this property with our support would be lowered to thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six, we need to get the current owner in here before Friday. Your question.
For, for our purposes, um, the person would have to, right, for our purposes, we would have to have the owner come in and payment made within thirty days. For your purposes, you're, you're on the clock. Right, and so you would have to, if the owner says, I can't get there until next week, you would have to make a business decision that the council stated that they will honor this thirteen five six for thirty days. So that would be a business decision that, that would be on your part that we can't make for you.
Mayor, um, a suggestion, if that's the direction the council goes, uh, and I could, you could analogize this to a development application where a developer or an architect or someone representing the owner comes in and fills out the application and the owner just signs a document authorizing them to do so. You could, for my purposes, that's absolutely sufficient if the owner just signs off, you're authorized to proceed.
Well, certainly, I, I didn't mean to imply that they physically had to come in. We would have to have some documentation that the owner is agreeing, right, or actually officially requesting a reduction. So, no, I'm sorry if I, if I, that he physically had to come. We just need, um, documentation, verified documentation that the owner is requesting the relief.
And now, in the event that we cannot get a hold of the owner, on Friday, would it be, would it be due to the first thing West Court from the county? Would we be responsible for that?
You would have thirty days. You would have thirty days to make the payment of thirteen five seven and...
Within those thirty days of the...
We would have not, providing that, the current owner of the property makes the request. So what I'm, I guess...
If the property is purchased on Friday, does the current owner can then request it?
No, because the request is being made tonight. Right, so we have the honor of the request being made tonight. So, again, you would make a business decision, do we want to run the risk of not being able to get a hold of the owner? Right, and if we can't do that in thirty days, then we, we are making a business decision to pay thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents. If we can't do this in thirty days. Because in thirty days, if we make a decision tonight, um, then it would be thirty days from today that the, that the thirteen five seven six would have to be paid. Right, if you understand what I'm saying. If you understand what I'm saying, so, okay.
The current owner, I understand you like that you either have it here first, or it's all up to you to get it.
Yes, and we're giving you thirty days for the current owner to request and payment be made.
Oh, you...
Thirty days. Thirty days.
And now, in the event that it goes thirty...
Then it's thirty-eight, seventy-six, yes.
The court mayor, you said it, we said it.
I, I said it several times.
And the payment be made.
Correct, both.
You said that is your one, and the payment is made.
Everything consummated in thirty days. Official request from the current owner and payment within thirty days. Okay, okay. Right, questions, comments, so we can move it, move on?
Just kind of, he's talking with ten, with Jack's office. And that's what I'm indicating that the owner is the same lien, hard to borrow.
One agency, one agency is not a, is not a, is not a. Probably pay them as a tax process. Probably pay them a pay faster than the tax. So I thought they may show the money about the borough on one side, and we'll see how we can.
Right, right. So that we don't tread into minutia any longer. Thirty days would just be, and everything would fall on the requestor to have everything done within thirty days. That would be the clear thing for us to consider here tonight, if indeed that's your desire.
Correct.
Correct, you own the other property, correct?
Okay, yes, so we haven't.
Okay, yes, so we haven't addressed that property yet. Okay?
Right, so that sort of.
Right, so that sort of cleaning, that kind of cleans it up, and that's where we'll stay, we'll come out of the weeds, and that's where we are thirty days to have the requestor, the current owner, and the fees.
And if not then.
And if not then, thirty days thereafter, on the thirty-first day, then it reverses back to the full amount.
Right, so what's your pleasure?
Right, so what's your pleasure?
Okay, I'll restate it.
Okay, I'll restate it, and then you can move it.
That, 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 that just cleaned up forty-eight eleven.
Forty-eight eleven. We're only dealing with forty-eight eleven at this point, correct? No, twelve oh two.
Which is the perp property.
Which is the perp property they do not own at this time, so.
West Court, twelve oh two, West Court.
I make the motion that regarding twelve oh two West Court Property Control Number, read it, uh, maybe approved.
They have proof.
You want to read it, okay. Forty-four, four-three, four-three, zero-five, one, zero, 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 seven, zero.
Right, for, 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 what are, what are the terms?
We do the one at a time.
Yes, but what are we, we're approving it for, for what?
It has to be part of your motion.
It has to be part of your motion. Okay, so I'll restate it, and then. And this is not the motion, here's the consideration. That the Towne Magoonia Park reduces the fine, the current lien amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents, down to thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and whatever the cent is. Provided that the current owner makes the, makes an official request for the relief and payment made within thirty days from today. Failure to do so on both accounts would result in the liens being restored to the full amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and oh six. What is your pleasure?
And that's most.
Okay, it has been moved. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. And now, as it relates to forty-eight eleven Australian. Now, this is the property they own. And that amount currently, the lien amount is currently seventy-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Using the formula that we've used, that is thirty-five percent to make sure we cover all of our costs and et cetera, would be twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and whatever the cents, I didn't count, didn't quite write it, and whatever the cents would be, appropriate cents would be. So that's their, that's the. Okay? Right, so it has been moved that the Towne Magoonia Park reduced the lien amounts of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents to twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and the appropriate cents. Has been moved, is there a second? Council on Green.
Second, second.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any additional questions on the motion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. Staff, any comment?
Keith, any comment?
Okay, Keith, any comment?
No, I think you covered it. We will, assuming payments made, we'll prepare and record the appropriate lien releases at the appropriate time.
Okay, and now the clarification on the motion is, well, the only difference being that you own the property, so you're making that request. But be that all, as with the previous, that and payment be made within thirty days of today. Failure to do so, of course, would result in the fees being reverted back to the seventy-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Is that the understanding of the maker of the motion, as well as the seconded?
Yes.
Right, so noted for the record. Any other questions or clarification on the motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we hope that that assessed, but we have to sort of stay consistent, okay?
Okay, you're more than welcome.
Okay, you're more than welcome, you have a great evening. Okay, we will move on, we have a few more items. Okay, so we will go back to seven E. Thank you so much for allowing us to take that out of order. On the item seven E, consideration of the contract agreement between the Towne Magoonia Park and Town Manager, Kenneth L. Metcalf of the Provisioned Administrative Services. To the town, cited in chapter two, administrative section two dash two-one, as it relates to town managers. You have a copy of the contract in front of you? And everyone had an opportunity to do their evaluations? Okay, I'm just looking. Righty, um.
He's not going to advocate.
He's not going to advocate for himself, but we're just going to have him.
Kind of explain to us.
Kind of explain to us, since we are the hiring authority, the reasons why we should extend the contract, okay?
Mayor Vice Mayor and County Council. And I enjoy working for the town, involved in my family's business. And I stand up naturally as a clerk, I stand for our consultants. Very happy, very happy here, and just very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you for another twenty-five years.
Okay, so just as it relates to the agreement, you have gone through the agreement. This same, of course, we just have a few material changes, that would be like the date, if approved. Uh, yes, in fact, if there's any discussion at all?
No.
No, the term currently stated is for two years.
Two-year agreement?
Two-year agreement, as it relates to council, what is your position on that? That would be one of the things that we're looking at in terms of the contract, two-year, that's what you would consider, looking to consider, if extended. Okay, I'm just trying to put out a few of the basic tenets, for the quick discussion. Two years, it's, two years is, is what you would want to see in a town manager's contract, generally speaking, okay? All righty, and of course, both, the, both parties, that would be the legislative body as well as the town manager. If indeed this is extended, or any town manager has the ability to opt out of it, so to speak, the town has a, not a?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty-day provision.
Thirty-day provision, should it decide, from just, from other glasses. Right, just in terms of page two, where has the information there? And so all of this is going to be standard, this is the contract before us, correct Keith? We're just looking to change the dates, if indeed.
It should be, I haven't worked on this yet, so.
Okay, this is the standard agreement that we've had?
It should be, yes. It should be, yes.
Okay, okay, was the reason prepared? Okay, so we just be looking to change the dates for the most part? We no longer reflect the salary, because that changes, and. So everything else is there? So everything else is there, so if we don't have any conversation, discussion, then we'll write into a vote, whatever your pleasure, what is your pleasure? I'm sorry?
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I'm just saying the floor is open for conversation, vote, and just whatever your pleasure is, the floor is open. Again, we have before us a request.
To renew the contract.
To renew the contract agreement between the current town manager, Kenneth L. Metcalf, for a period of two years. The information is before you, the scope of service and the terms and conditions are stated in previous contracts, or just carried over into this contract, which are the same. That being considered, what is your pleasure?
I'm making a note, I'm making a motion, we renew the contract agreement between Towne Magoonia Park and the town manager Kenny L. Metcalf for two years.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, made by McConnell and seconded by Green. Ready for the question? Any questions on the motion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, he had, he had to sweat for a minute, somebody had to, he's sweating, so, okay, good, good, thank you. Oh, yes, so unanimous, thank you so much, we appreciate all you do. Okay, thanks so much, so we'll continue on, that's, you out in the timely fashion? Our next item is item seven F, this is a consideration for the approval of a municipal agreement between Towne Magoonia Park and the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections from March nineteen, twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. Ken, uh, Keith, I'm sorry.
So I had, so I had supervisor of elections as she does every year, send say an agreement around. I made some edits which were approved through her legal office and sent that document to town hall, I don't, I, I hope that's what you have in front of you, I, I don't know. Okay, um, so I've had an opportunity to make my edits, as I said, I've had discussions with the SOEs, legal office, they've accepted my edits. My recommendation would be to approve the agreement as, with my edits to it. Here we want to make sure it has the mail-in, when I sent the first email, I didn't realize mail-in was the same as absentee, so I got educated on that.
So this reflects the changes made by our attorney? Okay, has the comments? Okay, so do these the sidebars for the comments that were made? I think that be considered, of course, it's sort of prefatory, in order to have our elections, the SOE, this is an entity that holds those elections. So as it relates to that, what is your pleasure, if there's a motion, we can make sure that the motion includes, providing that it is, and it is, we've just made the discussion, but just for the record, that we're approving the agreement with our attorney's comments and our directions to it, which I think we have in front of us, which is seven F. Okay, that being said, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, this is mayor, I knew that we approved the municipal agreement between Towne Magoonia Park and the town supervisor of elections from March nine thousand seven hundred and forty-one.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded, are there questions on the motion?
Hearing none, roll call?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. Thank you so much, our next item is item seven G, and this is a consideration for the renewal of an interlocal agreement between the Towne Magoonia Park and the Solid Waste Authority, SWA, for the delivery of municipal solid waste to designated facilities for municipal revenue sharing recycling program. Ken, okay?
So basically, well, we have, we have an interlocal agreement with the Solid Waste Authority. This is a proposed new interlocal agreement that makes some minor changes to address recent changes at the state law level regarding how recyclable material is collected. This, this would come into play at such time in the future that we have to go out to bid for a new garbage hauler. And when that happens, the provisions of this interlocal agreement regarding recyclable collection and the truck that they use to collect it, keeping things from being commingled, you know, the plastic and the paper and the regular garbage, and when they can not collect it because it's too contaminated. That, that's basically what the new legislation is about. So when we adopt this new interlocal agreement, which my recommendation is to go ahead and adopt it, then, in the future, when we have to go out to bid for our new garbage hauler, this will, will become into play, but I, I don't think that's going to be for a while, and I would certainly think by then that all the garbage haulers are going to have this in place, in terms of how they're collecting the recyclable materials and the language, and that contract will, will be easy to, to adopt at that point, so. That's what this is about, that's my recommendation.
Thanks so much, you have this in front of you, and you've heard the, the explanation as well as the recommendation from our attorney? Are there any questions or comments as it relates to the siding?
I just wanted to make sure I understand the, the town, the town, the station, consideration. If there are existing, some, some solid authorities responsible for transporting contaminated material, is that what this is?
Yeah, the solid waste authority is the entity in Palm Beach County that's responsible for the Palm Beach County Recycling Program. So, so the new legislation talks about, at the collection point, so whether you have waste management or Republic or whoever, whatever garbage hauler you have, there's new legislation in place that talks about, you know, when you have your recyclable material, there's a limited amount of contamination, I think it's twelve percent, whether it's garbage or commingled recyclable material, if it's excessive, then the garbage hauler doesn't have to pick it up, they can tag the property, and then, and then there's supposed to be a cooperative effort between the municipality and the garbage hauler and the solid waste authority to reach out to the offending entity, business or person, and, and try and. Get it straightened out. Get it straightened out, so that they are not having to deal with contaminated recyclables, because if it gets to the, to the, to the processing facility, then. And contamination is excessive, I think, then the question becomes who pays for that, and so, that's really what it's all about.
That's what I wanted to find out, and doesn't identify who pays for it. This agreement does not identify who pays for collection of contaminated material.
Well, and that will, so that will be a piece of, the future contract with your garbage hauler, whenever you have to go out to bid, because this isn't even going to come into play in our town until we have to go out to bid for a new, a new garbage hauler. So when that happens, that issue will be addressed in that new contract in the future.
We need to add in a collection of contaminated material with a new contract.
That'll be part of a, a future contract with future garbage hauler in the future, yes.
The list is not covering that, so if you challenge this, Dan, how do we protect ourselves if you are in a time period where there is possibility of contamination?
Well, right now, you have a contract, and that contract is not going to change because of this. The status quo will be maintained, this is only for future, when you have to, in the future, when you have to go out to bid. So it's not, there will not be any contract amendment to your current contract, nothing's going to change until we get to the point where we have to go back out to bid and renegotiate a new contract. Right, right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct. That is correct. And, and you know, there's really, it's a state law, it's something that we have to, the, the, the solid waste authority has to abide by, and then it trickles down to the collector, the garbage haulers and their contracts with the local governments.
So, so at this point in time, their response, the contract we have now.
Whatever our contract says right now is what it is, and that is not changing.
Okay, other questions? Okay, other questions or comments? That's, that's the renewal? Okay, yes, go right ahead, your renewal.
I move for the consideration for the renewal of an. Move for the consideration for the renewal of an interlocal agreement between Towne Magoonia Park and the Solid Waste Authority for the delivery of municipal solid waste to designated facilities for municipal revenue sharing recycling program.
Second, second.
Has been properly moved and seconded, are there any additional questions on the motion?
Hearing none, roll call?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, that concludes all of our action items at this point in town, we'll go to public comment, if there's any comment from the floor, we'll take that at this time. Any comments from the floor? Okay, so any comments from those in attendance? Any comments?
Questions?
Questions?
Righty?
Righty? Saying that there are.
There's none, okay.
There's none, okay, we'll close the floor, floor to public comment, we'll come now to our reports, I can?
Mayor Vice Mayor and County Council, thank you again for renewing my, renewing my contract, I've enjoyed it here, I look forward to people, and I'm anxious to get back to that first thing in the morning, so, just a couple of things, I did come once in front of you, a manager's report, in your interest of time, I will not go through everything that I can tell you, floods, potholes, river, beach, and, and. That's it, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer that, or any other topic, if you may have questions, otherwise, I'll just leave this for later.
Okay, all righty, and so if you have any other questions, only one-on-ones with Ken?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Captain?
Okay, Captain?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, unless there's any questions or comments for Captain?
All right, thanks so much.
All right, thanks so much, Keith?
Unless you have any questions for me, I have nothing to report.
Any questions or comments for Keith? Okay, all right, thanks so much. Oh. It's at dinner, on you.
Okay, okay, got it, you got it.
We don't want a Happy Meal either, nothing happy about it, nothing happy about it. He's trying to get us Happy Meals, I told him nothing happy about Happy Meals, so. Okay, all right. All righty, Council Smith, you have anything?
Um, I really have something.
Okay.
You know, I'm kind of moved by how things got conducted at Edgway Park, very organized, soon to be coming, irony about doing good, and I had to kind of disappear going to work, I did want to say, so organized is up, I thought it was well, working in a professional. So in our, there are.
Okay, okay, that's appreciated, yeah.
Okay?
Okay?
All righty?
All righty, um, council.
All righty, we're.
All righty, we're. Okay?
Okay, do we want to break?
Okay, do we want to break, and then go back to the floor?
Do we have permission?
We have permission?
We have permission to go back to?
We have permission to go back to the floor?
Do we have permission to go back?
Do we have permission to go back to the floor?
Okay, we can go right ahead.
Okay, I'll go right ahead.
Did you get closer to the mic? I can only hear mayor on YouTube, I can only hear Eddie Green on YouTube, so that's what they come, I mean, it's made for, and so let me speak about that, you cannot hear what's going on, honestly. Actually, you can only hear, and you can speak directly to the microphone, and so I was like, I didn't know, I wasn't sure, it was a little, sometimes what we do too, but it's terrible, it's terrible, it's up, down, and I was like, you can't hear, you gotta stay up there, staying, you don't even know what you gotta talk about, so I was, so I was, someone, you can't, you can't call in, you can't speak, like, turn it up and turn it down, but it really needs to be done, and later today, I stopped construction company, and framed a construction board, uh, to, to the gym, and they told me they were soon opening up West Place for construction, they'll be running that road, I just wanted to know how true it is, I spoke to Ken earlier, the records to this matter, I'm really concerned about it, but I live on that end, and I want to know if there's some truth to the man of West Place being opened up for construction, the guys came out, they'll be starting in December twenty twenty, and they should start, they'll be moving, they'll be moving.
Okay, that was a.
Okay, that was a.
I'm going to defer.
I'm going to defer, because I know nothing about it, so let me defer to town.
Just to make that. Mayor Vice Mayor and Councilman, Ms. Lisa, have we, you know, have we talked about today, that had to be part of the Meritage Group, you know, that's the word, and I think them, them, the virtual stranger construction. Okay, we'll reach out to them and find out exactly who they're working for, there is currently no agreement, that is a town right away, so there is currently no town agreement, no agreement with anyone to allow for that road to be widened, lengthened, opened up, anything like that, there's no agreement, there's no permits on that, there hasn't even been a conversation about West Place since the Meritage Group was here in September, so that's, that's all I know.
So, could someone from the town reach out to our construction, and ask them what are they talking about, because it was very disturbing to me, because I was told that everything was off the table for that unit of, to the mill, that's what you were told, so I did ask you, like, is this going to go forward, you said no, so I took your word.
At, at the moment, they were denied the masterin's plan, they do have the ability to reapply with a different plan, so at the moment, there's nothing.
So the guys will, everybody in the neighborhood, no time to do, they come back and try to. No, they actually had pulled up and they're like, stop, and I said, can I ask you, what's going on? And he said, oh, we're about to open up this one, and in December, and I said, what year, twenty twenty, and I said, I thought that was off the case, and he said, I don't know about this, I don't have any sense to you, but this road is going to be opened up, so my husband said, like, do you guys? Somebody else said, like, do you guys have approval on the lighting? Uh, for lighting, red light? No, so that's what they come in, quit kidding me, not your fault. Okay. Put the post there, please.
All righty. All righty.
We'll find out from the second regular construction, we'll certainly report back here now, or-
Right. Also, two, two quick comments, and then I'll come to you, Councilman Green. Two quick comments. Uh, the first is, um, that unless they're just acting off of some information and they were not told cease and desist, uh, we don't know. And also, keep in mind too, that, um, unless it happens here, feel free to let residents know, there's nothing official, because it all happens here in the sunshine, in the open, so. But we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, both of you, you know, we appreciate you doing that, because there is nothing. Okay?
No, no, I, I'm with, I'm with Captain.
On Mr. Quinn, Tom, I just wanna say to the council that, uh, in the neighborhood, I've been there twenty years, over twenty years right there, and I know, rise through the neighborhood, uh, council, go back there, it's part of the road, it's paved, and I think it's terrible, it was terrible in the neighborhood. It's part of that road, it's paved back there, and a long rural house, it seemed pretty stuff, the road is totally cracked up. And some neighborhoods, you just don't see that, and I think, I think it's, I think it's ludicrous to just paint a part of the road and just leave the rest of the neighborhood up there, when we're all wanting, another thing I wanna bring, because you're riding Tiffany Lake, there's a camera on every corner, the four-way camera, you can see every car. Now, cars been broken too, thousands of cars on that side. Yeah, yeah. I think that we don't put cameras in the neighborhoods, there should be sometimes vehicles of both, coming in, coming in, open to that neighborhood. I think it's only fair that we should see who's coming in and who's going out, I think it's only fair to, for people who stay back there, I can back there a long time, I'm always, some people don't live in that neighborhood, I see guys walking through their backpack, I know they don't stay over there, so I, I'm hoping something could be done about that, especially the roads, um, because there's so much other stuff that's discussed, sixty-two units, but what about the roads we drive on every day? Uh, some, I have kids that stay out on that end, gray sign, kids that play dead end, should be put in, and should notice things like that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Ken, you wanna address the roads, uh, and what's going on there?
Yeah, it's just right.
Oh, it's okay. Oh, it's okay. Yeah, in fact, I was riding through yesterday, and-
Okay, I can.
I have to say the word, uh, that doesn't jump out, that thing, I take your word, but I do a word.
Now, is it, is it-
Now, is it, is it where the actual lines were laid, and, 'cause they have an obligation to repave the roads, when they put in the sewer lines, or, 'cause they have to make it whole, so they, so those roads were repaved? If they were not, in the area where the new sewer lines were laid, then there was no work done.
Right, so it would still be-
Right, so it would still be the official roads.
But to your point.
But to your point, uh, but to your point.
Both of one part neighborhood, okay.
Okay, I, I, okay. Right. Okay, from an aesthetic standpoint, I got you.
Right. And now, another thing I want to say about the-
Uh, no, no, go right, go right, go right ahead.
About the, so, everybody, everybody sees that, coming there, coming there, for you.
Okay, okay. Now, relative, now, relative-
Fast by neighborhoods, some neighborhoods have a sign, a sign, you can have some kind of monument, probably in that, you feel, I feel, I feel, I own that lot.
That's our neighborhood.
That's our neighborhood, you're now welcome to, you know, you know, our neighborhood is something, what's, what's- Something just, kind of, well, if you got the store right there, Seaco Gas Station, you got a lot, I don't know who own that lot.
Private lot.
Private lot, west of Seaco Gas Station. I mean, if you go right there, if you go right there, the first street, welcome to, they have a little sign, and then, I don't know, living thing, you got it.
Right, right.
Y six three five, the lights are shining on that, welcome to our neighborhood.
It's private property.
It's private property.
Yeah, we couldn't do anything.
Yeah, we couldn't do anything with the private property.
Right.
Right, in terms of the cameras, Catalaia?
Of course, Tiffany Lake.
Of course, Tiffany Lake, Catalaia. Their association decided for security purposes, and the captain is here, can kind of elaborate if needed. Their association decided that they were going to get into stricter security kind of measures for them, right? We met with them several times, about security and so forth, so that was their answer to it. They paid for that, as an association.
Why, so it wasn't the town?
Right, but now, keep in mind too, that if the town, uh, wanted to engage in something like that, we would have to consider the whole town, right? We'd have to sort of match up, map, map it out, and where are the, and there would have to be a hierarchy, just based upon a whole lot of things, and we'd have to get with the, PBSO, the captain, where the high prime areas, let's kind of target those first. So, um, so, yeah, we would hope that we would, internet, citywide, as well as security citywide, is a goal, so we hope that can happen at some point, but, yeah, we would have to-
Community, community, well, I put flyers out to the community, they, who wants to-
If, if the community-
If, if the community-
Wants to help pay for a camera for that, how they feel, how they're feeling, like, you know, that's what-
Right, okay, if, if-
I'm thinking it's something, community as a whole, would be interesting, what you say, if that's-
Right, if the, right, if, if it's a town action, then the town would have to consider the whole town, right? But if the Brimar section got together and said, you know, let's, let's develop a kitty, or we can do a security system, we put them at the interests, that you would have to come before the council, they're turning everybody to be involved, explaining how, how it can be done, and so forth, but then, keep in mind too, that the upkeep and the maintenance and everything else, because it wasn't town, it was, the development would be responsible for the monthly cost.
Well, sorry to hear that.
Well, sorry to hear that, I, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen a rash of that, and the captain can sort of, chime in, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just along those lines, Sheriff's Office, this enterprise is going to install in, uh, W R, so, like, readers, in, uh, some areas up front, project, program, right now, we're waiting for permit from the county, to place, uh, two sets of cameras, and, and as budget allows, we'll try and install more. But that is, and the workers.
Right, and ask through the PBSO, and we appreciate it, and they've been very good to us, and so that initiative, initiative from there, so we appreciate it.
Now, keep in mind too-
Now, keep in mind too, um, that, you can call us, depending where they put them initially, they, they've looked at everything to determine where to put those initial cam, initial readers.
You can call us.
Right, you can call us, and then we'll refer you to the PBSO for explanation as to wide the decision, so.
Well, Ken, I mean, just, what you just mentioned, Chief, and, uh, I'm sorry, I fired that, that morning, about what you're doing, is that, did that move too fast? Because I think this confirmation, but we really would make people feel that-
We will put the information out as, as part of our, and, and-
They cannot hear, we will see, we will see.
Then I appreciate that, I forgot we had that conversation, appreciate it, okay?
All righty.
All righty, um, we were, Councilman Smith, and then, okay, you all done, Councilman Smith?
Okay.
Okay, Councilman McConnell, you have anything?
Okay, Councilman Green.
Okay, Councilman Green, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I- Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I- I'm gonna say my comments for, because, due to the- Timing. Timing, but I do want to make a comment about- The experience- The experience that the Davis has had today, because when they called ironically, I was having a gender review with town manager. And when they started describing what was happening, and the individuals, at that time, were on the property, I gave my cell phone to Mr. Metcalfe. And, 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 I don't like to make my comments to the attorney, because- That didn't just happen by itself. Like I told Mr. Metcalfe, it's happened for a reason. And a couple of- And a couple of, Metcalfe last week. As a council person- As a council person, uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if the Meritage- The Meritage- Meritage project was voted down by the council. Three was against, one was for. That item was dead. That item was dead. So, why would a council person- So, why would a council person- Go to a resident in the town of Mangonia Park? And ask that person- And ask that person- If the project came back, would they vote for the road? Would they support the road? Two residents- Two residents. Some person asked two residents in the town. And, 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 and I said this to our town manager. To me, that was the impetus for what happened today. True you are. It came from one of us. That didn't happen for nothing. And the reason I wanted to bring it up is because, for me, I almost thought about- A council person. Lobbying. Lobbying. A developer. A developer. Because, because, like I said to Mr. Metcalfe. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. These people didn't come here on their own. So, I don't know- I don't know what kind of law, what, what was done, or- How inappropriate. How inappropriate, what? But, a council person was lobbying for the developer. Asking some of the residents in the town, would they support that road if it came back? And I, I, and I, for me, I think that's probably what happened, I don't know, but I, other than that, I had to make that comment, because that did happen. I don't know what happened, like you said, they left before he even got there. But my comment that I want to make, I just had to wait for, Mr. Mayor, I'll wait until next meeting, since it's so late.
All righty, um, so let me just declare, it wasn't me, so, whatever. No, 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 let me, let me be very clear, it wasn't me, but there is absolutely nothing wrong, for this, anybody sitting here to speak to a prospective developer. You want people to come here, right? And then we make a decision whether it's appropriate to be here or not. It wasn't me, so if a council person did that, and you want to speak, and you want to speak, feel free to do it, I was just declaring it wasn't me. I would speak if it was me, and tell you why I did it, uh, but I'm just declaring it wasn't me, and give the opportunity for a council person, if indeed that did happen, with the council person, if that person, he or she wanted to speak, then feel free to address it, but it was, I would if it was me, but it wasn't me.
Well, I would say this, I have no idea who tell Ranger, when they were up to construction, if you-
You don't know what they were doing. Who would tell them, they're gonna pill the road, I don't know.
Have no idea.
Have no idea who did that, okay, so, now, what I will say this, when we had our, when we had our council meeting, and the plan, and the plan that was brought to us from the developer was reviewed and discussed, I indicated to the developer that I was not pleased with the traffic, travel plans that they had brought. In fact, they did not change from the first time I met with them, they must prior, and I felt a little bit unsafe plan for our town, however, I was not against, against the development. I think the development is needed for this town. I just think it needs to be done with all awareness of all travel options. Now, I did have an idea, that I wanted to bring, to this council today, and I asked a few residents, asked if they thought this was a good idea. This idea was nothing to do with West Place. This idea was for a route, a different road that would lead to, which traffic lights by train. So that travel could be enabled, to the north end of Mangonia Park, which leads along the train track, along that road, back to the train rail area, so travel can be easily accessed, of traffic light. But I don't think it's fair or safe, for people that have to U-turns with the mess that's, that's, I don't know, you should have traffic. That goes on, repeat time, according to history, between, I like, ninety-five. It's not safe. I saw an accident just the other day, with two cars, it's cut on right out there because of the turn U-turn. My suggestion is we have an alternate route, that would take traffic off of this forty fifth street area. Would that be a good idea? And this is yes, that's a good idea. That's my, that was my concern. And nothing to do with what everybody, anybody wants to do on West Place, that was not my discussion with anybody, with, with anybody, no.
And keep in mind too, nobody sitting up here has the authority or the ability to contact, what, 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 what it was. Right, to con, and tell them, and to come and pave a road, nobody sitting here has that authority.
They have to do it in December.
Right, he mistated, uh, got bad information.
Bad information.
Bad information, so whatever happened, but nobody sitting here has the authority to do it, and I don't know that anybody did do it, because we understand what our authorities are.
It would be nice, while December, actually, to have, because you feel like-
They would, they would, they would get a cease and desist order right away, because nothing has been done here, and our attorney will, you know, how that happens, so, there's nothing here, so.
All righty.
All righty.
Follow up to the vice mayor. I'm gonna bring up, and I, I'm gonna be very short, 'cause it's late, but I want to do a follow-up to what the vice mayor just brought up. And Mr. Metcalfe, I'm just gonna bring up- Of what happened? Of what happened, that the residents, and, and, for a reason, because, this is what I wanted to bring up on my comment. I've been fighting for- I've been fighting for affordable housing. For twenty years. For twenty years, within the county. And we need it. But, 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 we, we up here, we up here, are all up here for the same thing, we are looking out for our residents, and- We need affordable housing everywhere. But, to me, this is me personally, Mayor. I would rather write now, and give you a good example of what happened. I have two city- I have two, three city citizens I've always worried with. One is dead, I have one now, and she called about her roof. In the Hill section. In the Hill section. And Mrs. Metcalfe- And Mrs. Metcalfe, and, and- I sent the person who did my roof. And he, when he came, when he saw her roof, he called me back, and was telling me, how pitiful he felt sorry for her, as a city citizen, because she could not afford what the insurance was making her do to her roof. And when he started, the contractor started explaining to me, I said, no, you need to tell this to the town manager, because, that is exactly what my dream is, because we have county, uh, county department, that will work with, assist, work with our seniors. To help them. To help them, upgrade their homes, to keep them in their homes, that's to me, what we need to be doing right now, is working to make sure our people can afford to live in decent housing in Mangonia Park, because they have the available funds to do that, before we start bringing in new development, let's help develop what we have here, where the people live, because they, right now, because of the virus, everybody want to move to Palm Beach County, and, and, and the poor people in Hill section, and Brimar, they're buying up their homes, and I'm gonna end up, I said this, and we can finish it next week, because we all want to go home. My neighbor next door, put- I've been here thirty years. And I've never seen mattresses. Pile up in front of a house. And they stayed there a week last week. And I was glad, I think you did, and she just mentioned that we here in Mangonia Park need to update our codes. That's what, that's what I really want to do, Mayor, is work in upgrading our homes to keep our seniors in their homes, before we, go trying to bring in development, and I hope we will be able to discuss that, uh, at least talk about it, and I, I like to have us as, as a council, talk about, working with the county to upgrade our homes, matter of fact, the contractor, that works with her now, is meeting with Mr. Metcalfe, when's the morning, that's how serious it is. So, that's why I was glad you mentioned that, Vice Mayor, because that's where my interests lie.
Now, I appreciate it, I'm gonna give that manager, town manager, an opportunity to respond to it, because I, I understand, I know who the resident is, and what took place to assist, um, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot to address it.
So, uh, it appears that the resident, the, the, the town chairman brings, was talking to the contractor on Sunday afternoon, it kind of occurred, it kind of occurred to me who it might be, and I asked him, is this, and so, he said, yes, it is, and he said, well, actually, uh, Sherry and I were able to, through the county, get some paperwork. Well, actually, Sherri and I were able to, through the county, get some paperwork through one of their programs.
Thanks.
And we really walked this individual through the process. I met with her in her living room on a couple occasions, and had her come in with her legal representative and go through the paperwork. Really, I don't know what ever happened, not that we were talking about this earlier today, I don't know what ever happened, but apparently, it fell through somehow, but I know the county was approving. I know basically.
Now, why did it fall through? Was something, something on?
Now, keep in mind, the town has no obligation.
The town was assisting, so why did it fall through?
Okay.
Okay.
So the. I think five years, or something like that.
But the resident didn't follow through.
Okay.
All righty, okay, so we're, we're, we're gonna move.
Now, say that, my, 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 my point is this, she's just one of many people, that we are, we need to be helping to stay in their home, is my point.
Certainly, just before, just before, so I can just, very quickly, one of the things that we've looked to do for years and years and years, was figure out, how can we assist, particularly number one, our seniors? Because we know all of us on fixed incomes, we're there on a fixed, fixed income. How we can do that? We looked at paint your heart out south Florida to paint and do everything else. We got young kids with our program, saying, "Yes, we'll, we'll help as well, we'll come and help paint and do all of that," in order to get credits and all of that kind of stuff. But it gets to the bottom line as simply this, right? Everything has to be a contribution, either out of our pockets, out of the, it can't be from the town. The town cannot spend public dollars on private property. So we have no mechanism by which we could say, "We're gonna go lay grass out of the town coffers and write a check for them." We can't do that, that's, that's, that's against the rules. Right, so we can't do that. But we can solicit businesses, right? Can you donate? Can you do this? Right, and so, some were lined up, you know, sometimes it's kind of difficult to get people to come out and do things.
I'm not a carpenter.
I'm not a carpenter. I'll get out there and hold wood and help saw it and everything else, but until people who are, who has the ability, they have the certification about where the trade, whatever it is, and that just hasn't come to fruition yet. And so it's not a new idea, something we've been trying to do forever and forever and ever, but we can't spend town dollars to send a contractor out there to do things on private property. Okay?
All right, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
All right, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Put you on that point, Mayor, I'm just asking you this. If our town had five hundred thousand dollars for home assistance, five million dollars for home assistance.
Would we do some?
Would we do some project?
Absolutely. No, absolutely.
Can we all get our town to look at that? Three million, five million of revenue, in order to do this type of assistance, or people who need it?
We'll solicit ideas.
We'll solicit ideas, and feel free to get ahold of the town manager to her question. Yeah, we got some ideas, let us know.
We need to have some more tax revenue dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and how would we do that? By increasing the vote, the vote in our town.
We've got to.
We've got to increase the development in our town, to have money, have a fund, fund set up, home and assistance. I'd love to say we have five million dollars in Mangonia Park. How does it, who are they need?
We don't have that.
We don't have that kind of fund set up. But if you push developers that can bring that kind of revenue into our town, to meet those needs.
It's not, it's not.
We have enough in one or two homes. We need to have enough revenue to meet a need of many senior citizens.
In our town.
In our town. We have to move beyond where we are now.
And to roll.
And to roll into opportunities that can bring the revenue in.
My goal is that.
My goal is that we take the safest route in doing that.
So, that's what you said.
Well, well.
I'm out of my backyard.
You know, you know, you know, you know?
I did, I did, I mean, I have no phone, I'm contacted, I believe in it.
Okay, I believe in it too. I believe in it too, and that's why I have these people that I'm speaking to, asking for support, for a letter to send to him, to get, to get things done for our town.
That's what I saw, making these, you know, I'm, I'm.
There's a lot that can be done, there's a lot in various ways, but we can only go with the developers that bring the proposal, that we can move on.
Okay.
If they don't come with it, what can we do?
Before anything, again, when you're dealing with private property, private individuals owning things, and so, until the sale.
All the rights, they're property.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
What was it? Move away from this issue totally? The last thing, one more thing, we had a donor who brought food to our seniors past Friday. I don't know if you know who the donor is, or the donor was here a minute ago, I'd ask if I could make mention of his name. But, seniors who need food, I'm making a list.
Who need food.
Who need food, okay, Friday was frozen breakfast and lunch meals, five meals for breakfast, five meals for lunch, were given to each senior, or each name that I have, in all, children, school age kids. So if you have any of those names, let me know. I'm gonna compile this list, so we have a list of names, and we'll start mentioning them, something else, under those names, for that donor, for that donor's request.
So with that, we gotta conclude, we gotta conclude, it's, it's.
I can help you out, that people need me all the time.
Okay, right, right.
Everything.
Right, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate it. So what we're gonna do is, just anything that you can do to assist, whether it's helping home repairs, we had a neighbor in the Hill Section whose roof fell in, McConnell and I went up there, he's in construction, on a windy day, nailing down tarp and so forth, but you can only, two people can only do so much, so any ideas or suggestions you have, speak with Ken Metcalfe, right, so we can kind of wrap it up. Sort of late, so we're gonna go ahead, and, but I did want to just say this to the council, and I, and I, this is, this is not a spanking or anything else, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that we represent the whole town, the whole town. We talked about traffic and the impact it would have, and I, I'm not being offensive, I'm just, because I think the whole town, right, and the traffic that would cause if a development happened in the Brimar Section and a piece of property, and there was a ruckus about it. We talked about the potential traffic impact that would happen in the Hill Section, nobody lent their voice to it, except the two council persons from the Hill Section. We, we, when we're having issues in the town, we need every elected official to lend your voice to it. Traffic is traffic, and I didn't hear anybody except the two from Hill Section, speak about the traffic problem over there. Yeah, that, that's, that's my statement for the record, I won't take it off the record. Okay, so with that, um.
I just want to say.
Okay, just real quick.
You asked about food, and I wanted to highlight, how long you gonna, I mean, are you gonna, can you say, in five years, in three years, we're gonna have some? Is it gonna still another ten years? Are you gonna have a city with every horizon, a little small place, every day, every day, horizon going up? And that's not even a part of.
Look, look, let me say this, and I say this respectfully. Okay, two, two very quick things, and then we gotta, right. The workshop is, I'm gonna be honest, isn't necessary, because what we're doing, two things happened. Number one, again, that's private property. So the only thing you can do, and Keith can jump in and correct me if I misstate, on private property, the owner, all we can do is, when it's out of compliance, we can fine, 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 in perpetuity. Make them come into compliance. Then perhaps at some point in time, if they fail to do it, then we assess lanes, and then we try and go through the process of doing what, acquiring the property, not a problem, we're just foreclosed on the property in a long period. I'm speaking generally, right, about property. The other thing too, is that when someone, when a developer comes in, right, with a project, and they're coming to spend tens of millions of dollars, and we constantly kick them away, you know what happens within the development community? Don't even bother with Mangonia Park, because here's what they're, right, and we continue to do that. We continue to do it, because we don't want a little minor inconvenience, and so we run